Welcome to December 6th meeting of the Mifflin County Board of Commissioners. We begin this morning with an invocation followed by a bunch of allegiance. That is praying. O God, our fathers, we guard in our hearts today the sacred memory of those who gave their lives on that day which will live in infamy. Bless us, the Lord, as we humble ourselves in thy presence to remember those who served our country so valiantly. Let us not disgrace those who still lie in the quiet places through our indifference or forgetfulness. Rather, help us to always remember Pearl Harbor and help us to keep America alert. May we not forget that more than 2,000 of our sons, fathers, brothers, sisters, and friends were killed, and more than 1,000 citizens of our land were wounded on December 7th, 1941. Their sacrifices were not in vain. They defended America's freedom and demonstrated America's goodness. Guide us and direct us in all that we do. Let us live to bring glory and honor to thee, as we pray in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll undertake the motion for approval of the minutes for meeting last Thursday, November 4, 2018. I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Approval of the bills, Commissioner Postal.
As usual, we'll start with our accounts payable, which total 241,436 dollars and 30 cents. Payroll account totals 479,921 dollars and 97 cents. We have four checks and two EFTs from the 911 account, which total 11,013 dollars and 36 cents. Two checks in the CDVG account for 32,377 dollars and 94 cents. The CDVG home account has two checks totaling 15,400 dollars and 9 cents. And finally, the Act 137 account has one check for 644 dollars and 54 cents.
Make the motion. Pay bills. Thank you. I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Bills are approved. Treasurer report, Treasurer Civits.
Our starting balance is 334,634 dollars and 31 cents. We had deposits of 242,128 dollars and 8 cents. We transferred 500,000 from the Capital Reserve. We voided a check for 34.54, and we had interest of 1,087 dollars and 5 cents. We agree with the reading of the bills by Commissioner Postal, leaving us at any balance of 356,525 dollars and 71 cents. Our local fuels has 310,789 dollars and 45 cents. Our Act 89 has 264,245 dollars and 21 cents. Our 911 has 2,706,589 dollars and 45 cents. Our LEP has 16,513 dollars and 23 cents. Our local use fund has 192,539 dollars and 69 cents. Our Capital Reserve has 1,405,667,899 dollars and 31 cents. And our certificate of deposit has 3,054,389 dollars and 22 cents on the whole circuit of the audit.
Thank you. Any questions for this? Don, I'll undertake the motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Meetings and events, Commissioner Duncan.
Okay, we last met last Thursday, so it has only been one week, rather than two weeks, to report outside meetings and activities. We attended the Mifflin County Planning Commission meeting, which was last week. Attending that meeting were two representatives from the Harrisburg area community college to discuss what HAC has done in Mifflin County. The two in attendance were Dr. John Sieg and Jenny Barr. Enrollment has done well. Since they first came here, I think initially, their starting enrollment was 20 students in this past year. They're up to 60. Much of the coursework is geared around the nursing program at the Lewis Town Hospital. This week, we had a meeting with Senator Corman. When I say we, that included the three commissioners, Senator Corman, Janice Step, who's the superintendent of public schools here in Mifflin County, as well as two administrators from the academy. So, and the purpose of the meeting was to discuss continuing education, adult education, and just advanced education for the people of Mifflin County. We had several department head meetings where we met with various people from the various departments to resolve issues that were relevant in their departments. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your question?
I had meetings with Armaun Brown Township Supervisors and the Cetacog Co-op, Natural Gas Co-op, to explore a future natural gas project in those townships. As Commissioner Duncan reported, we had a meeting with the school district, and the senator talked about future educational opportunities. Had a meeting with Wayne Township to discuss the bridges in Wayne Township. As Treasurer Civits had reported, in our local use fund, we have now 192,539 dollars, and we're about to embark on a few projects with municipalities to now use that fund. We participated in the annual Christmas parade last Saturday, and attended the Mifflin County Planning Commission meeting.
All right, thank you. I had the planning commission meeting as well. I had the Regional Services Personnel Committee. We had the planning meeting with Senator Corman. I had the Call Ride Services Board. And we had a meeting regarding future budget planning. Also attended the Cetacog board meeting in Lewisburg yesterday. Do we have any public comment this morning? All right, seeing none, we'll move to new business, and just like changing the agenda. A and B are going to be reversed. We'll handle item B first. That's change order number two for the Bender Park ADA fishing pier project. Additional quantities of materials, the amount of 485 dollars. Jim, look here, you want to address that under Doug Marks?
All right, this project was, or is substantially complete now. What this project was is a new fishing pier at Bender Park. It is a concrete deck area with a walkway running from the existing ADA pathways in the park, which will provide better access for the fishing, for fishing in the local The change in quantities was based on the amount of asphalt that was used and stone for the pathway. There was some minor quantity additions there. So, the change is for an additional 485 dollars for the project, and the project is essentially, or substantially, complete now. We're just waiting for grass to grow in the springtime, so other than that, it's complete and can be used at any point in time.
Okay. Any questions for Doug?
Are we going to have an early spring?
I'll have to see what the little rose says.
Okay, motion to approve item B in the agenda.
Second.
You properly leave the second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Now we'll give you item A, resolution number 17 of 2018, on behalf of the Brown Township Supervisors, approving the budget revisions for the fiscal years 2015 and 2016 for CDVG program. Jim?
Good morning. This is tied to that change order and its revisions to the county on behalf of Brown Township, CDVG, fiscal year 2015 and 2016. That project was funded in 2015, the fishing pier project, in the amount of 27,985 dollars, and also in 2016, the amount of 13,700 dollars. As Doug mentioned, the project's substantially completed. The bid came in at 27,785, additional quantities needed, as he said, so we needed an additional 485 dollars. What we want to do is just move some money around, not increasing or decreasing the overall budget for the county's fiscal years, but just the line item budgets for those projects. So what we're requesting is decreasing the Woodland and Eastback Mountain Road water lateral project. That was a housing rehabilitation project to hook onto the new water lines that were installed there, in the amount of 2,063 dollars and 41 cents, and increase the 2015 Bender Park project by that same amount, leaving a budget for that project in the amount of 30,048 dollars and 41 cents. That would allow us to expend that earlier money quicker, and that will be totally expended. Then there's a revision to the 16 project. We want to decrease the Bender Park fishing pier in the amount of 917 dollars and 85 cents, and increase the housing rehab project by that same amount, leaving a project budget for Bender Park in 2016 in the amount of 12,782 15, and the new single-family housing rehab project in the amount of 53,297 85. The supervisors took action on Monday of this week to approve their provisions. That was through resolution, and subsequently, we need the commissioner's adoption as well.
All right, thank you, Jim. Any questions? Motion to approve resolution 17 of 2018.
Seven. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. At this point, we'll recess the public meeting for a public hearing for the Mifflin County Community Development Block Program Competitive Project in Wayne Township.
Okay, you may be familiar with this project. We talked about it before. This is a grant proposal for an area in West Wayne Township, bounded by Morgan Drive to the north, Lucy Furnace Road to the east, US Highway 22 to the south, and Oak Lane to the west. You should have been provided an aerial map with the boundary areas of the project site. We had, you had previously approved improvements in that area through CDVG money, entitlement money, for sewer work in the amount of, the amount of 151,025 dollars. That was from 15 and 16. That project is going to start shortly, very soon. I think we're ready to go on that. And then, after that project came through, there were some discussions that Doug Marks had with some other, the representatives from the sewer authority to potentially propose a competitive grant out there. This is a discretionary grant. It's not equivalent to the entitlement money that we get, so it's a competitive process. There were other substantial needs out there in that area, and we had an engineer, the each group, who proposed a budget for this project, and the total grant request is a million dollars. This is a big project, and it consists of several items. One is mobilization and demobilization, and I'll go through the line items quickly. That's 45,010 dollars. There's stormwater management improvements in the amount of 160,000 dollars. There's sanitary sewer improvements in addition to those that are being done with 15 and 16 money, in the amount of 16,700 dollars. And the significant portion of the grant is water system improvements, which is increasing the line diameter and installing fire hydrants, and that cost is 251,800 dollars. There's also engineering costs involved with this project, which will have to go through a competitive process through a request for proposals. That budgeted amount is 112,000 dollars. We are permitted to take 6% of the total grant for program administration, representing 60,000 dollars for our department to administer the grant. We had entered into a grant writing proposal with Wayne Township in July of this year, up to 5,000 dollars to prepare the grant. We're about ready to submit it. It's due to the state at the end of December. We're waiting for some support letters. Other than that, the grant proposal's already completed. There was a meeting, the first public hearing held Monday evening with the supervisors. There was some discussion relative to whether the Mount Union Water Authority was going to pay for any of the grant writing fees, and they, if you look at the proposal, they, their costs are offset by over a quarter million dollars, and they wanted, I think it was a question whether we were going to approach them to provide some funding for the grant writing fee, and we felt it was up to the supervisors to initiate that. So, I think they have a good argument to discuss with them, but the proposal and the grant writing agreement was strictly between the commissioners and the supervisors, so we left it at that. I think I covered everything. Just to give you kind of what the character of that area is, there's 61 single-family homes there. There are detached homes. There's some several mobile homes. It's primarily low to moderate income. We did a survey, an income survey, a few years ago, and I believe the, I believe the percentage was around 53% LMI, which allows us to apply for additional monies for this area. So, this is a big project. It's a good project, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And the public is also, should be provided an opportunity to comment on that, and if they have any concerns relative to the expenditures of our past CDVG money, or this project, there's a form there, a grievance form we're required to have, and there's also a sign-in sheet. If you have not signed that, please sign that. That's required as part of the submission. That's all I have.
All right, does anyone from the public here have any questions or comments to wrap up the public hearing portion?
I attended that meeting on Monday. I was there for good purpose, but obviously, the public hearing also occurred, and there's a significant public safety component to this project also. I don't know if they have portable water there now, correct?
Yeah, it's, but the lines are undersized, and there's no, or very few fire hydrants in the area. We're adding four fire hydrants.
So, the, so the fire companies are very much in favor of this. They were to send some support letters to us, and I was just pointing out the public safety component of this, of this project is also very important. And yes, the grant agreement is between the county and the township, but it would be a good idea for Mount Union Water Authority to participate in that, but we're not going to get involved in that negotiation, but it would be a good idea. They are benefiting from this project also.
Okay. Anything else, anyone? If not, this time, I'll reconvene our regular public meeting with item C, resolution number 18 of 2018, authorizing the submission for 2019 Community Development Block Grant Competitive Application for the West Wayne Township Cedar First Area and Mount Union for the Infrastructure Improvements Project. I have motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Don, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you, Jim. Item D, request for exoneration of 2018 County Pool District capital taxes. Wayne Township Tax Collector Marion Reed has 7. Brown Township Tax Collector Cheryl Hartzler has 98. Granville Township Tax Collector Billy Weaver has 28. Motion to approve exoneration.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item E, personal service agreements for use if needed by children and youths. Center of County Children's Advocacy Center in Belle Plone, Pathways Adolescent Center of Royal City, Children's Center of Pittsburgh, and Family Care for Children and Youth of Milton. Hannah Bunn.
All these are renewals. So, the CAC we use are generally our sexual abuse investigations, but really, any that are children and youth or victims of crime. Pathways is an RTF that we use for kids that are between the ages of 13 and 17, and both the Children's Center of Pittsburgh, Family Care of Children and Youth, Children and Youth, they're both adoption services that assist with RSPCA care, kinship services, and they do our child profiles and family studies.
Okay, questions?
Do you choose which one to go to?
So, for example, we're using the Children's Center of Pittsburgh for a young man that we have that's located in the western part of the state, because their caseworkers then have easier access to meet with the kids, and they usually meet with them on a monthly basis to try and determine what they want within their new family and permanency. So, it's based upon where the kids are located generally.
And some kind of treatment facility, it depends. These are very narrow treatment, like residential treatment facility takes certain kids with certain issues, and that's really what drives.
Yes.
But why you have a number of replacements, you know, you can see why you have them, because they all kind of specialize in what they do.
All right.
Thank you, Hannah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item F, purchase of service agreement with Mark Remy Esquire for the Law Office of Captain Snook as Assistant District Attorney for the period January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019, for a monthly sum of 2,625 dollars. Motion approved.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item G, purchase of service agreement with Mark Remy Esquire for the Law Offices of Neppa and Snook as prison board solicitor for the period January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019, at a rate of 100 dollars per hour. Motion approved.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item H, purchase of service agreement with Brian Baker, private detective and criminal investigator for the Public Defender's Office, at a rate of 695 dollars per month for the period January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. Motion approved.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item I, applications for county aid, 2018 local fuels allocation. Burnham Borough, 2,061 dollars 68 cents. Meadow Township, 2,912 dollars 44 cents. Motion to approve the application.
So moved. I'm the second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item J, appointment of Gene Wolfkill to Mifflin County Internet Advisory Board. Motion approved.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item K, 2017 grant agreement with US Department of Homeland Security to follow the update of the Mifflin County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Goins, if I can address that please.
Yes, I will. Sounds good.
Or Phil Lucas, you can join in?
I prefer. Several months ago, you authorized the application for the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, and it was approved. This is the follow-up, which is basically the agreement, which has to be approved by the county, that we were entering into agreement with, with the, I guess it's the, I don't even remember. Yeah, I'll make sure it's not that, you had Homeland Security on it, that's the reason I asked them. But anyway, that's all it is, is to enter into the agreement. I shared the agreement with Mr. Snook, and I don't think we can make any changes anyway, but I did share it. But this is, this is only so we can have the agreement going forward.
This one, the elements of the grant, this is 2017.
Well, it started, I think, I don't know why.
All right, Phil, I do it.
Yeah, we have, we'll tag team this one. Here, you stay with me. Okay. The grant itself is the result of flooding and damages in 2017. When the federal government recognized that we had significant damages in the Presidential Disaster Declaration in Pennsylvania, they make these funds available afterwards so that counties in the affected area, which we are adjacent to, become eligible to do pre-disaster mitigation activities, so we can prepare better for disasters in the future.
Any more questions for Phil or Phil?
So, when do we, when do we actually start then? We have actually started the process. Started the process, it's actually just going into effect in August, so we've had it for a while, but we've been waiting for an agreement, and this is the agreement, so but in order to get the, we need execution by commissioners to move this forward. We've actually obtained a consultant to provide the services and coordination. Which the commissioner's approved a few weeks ago, which is, I think, it's just taking the state, about four months to process that sort of agreement. Everything is sort of behind a paper on this thing.
All right, I'll ask if you've got a way to appear for the next item as well. All right, do I have a motion to approve the grant agreement?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item L, appointments to the Hazard Mitigation Plan Advisory Committee. Matt Stringer, McVaytown Borough, Ron Napakowski, Dairy Township, Paul Bann, Mifflin County School District, Serena Harshbarger, Bratton Township, Matt Moore, Valley View Haven, Rex Fink, Lewis Town Borough, Bob Henry, Union Valley Behavioral Developmental Services, Pat Shute, Fay EMS, Ann Thompson, Union Township, Mike Reed, or Armaun Township Supervisor, Armaun Township, Craig Bub, Municipal Authority of the Borough of Lewis Town. You might wonder how these individuals were selected, is this a district committee or for something here?
Well, some of the people were from four years ago, and then some are added, and we just enhanced that, and we've had, I actually got some townships we had some trouble getting adopted with the last time, so they were on this committee, and I wanted to update this morning, and I was telling Captain, and we're telling this morning, Mike Reed says he did not want to serve, and Brenda Allmiller, who's a supervisor and a secretary, agreed to serve, so that's why, so I wanted to make sure that's clear, she agreed to serve on the committee. But that's, that's how we talked this out. We also looked, and Phil suggested we have somebody from the utility company, which was Craig Bub, and that's the one, when Craig, I mentioned this to Craig, he offered his wife.
High demand.
So, anyway, I have that, and then we, they asked, we, one thing we talked about when we met with PMA was to get some of the nursing homes, so we got Valley View, and Valley View wants Matt Moore to do that. We also got somebody from the school district. Ron Napakowski is going to serve both, from the hospital, Anson Dairy Township. Matt Stringer, who works for McVaytown, also works for Aller Township, and I'm trying to confirm whether he will also serve from Aller Township, but I don't have that confirmed yet, but, so in other words, we have at least five or six municipalities, so we have a mix and spread of people on the committee, and it's only going to be four times next year, so.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Let the record show that Brenda Allmiller will be the person from Armaun Township, and motion to approve these appointments.
So moved. I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion is approved. Item M, resolution number 18 of 2018 authorizing signature changes of the Recorder of Deeds Record Improvement Fund. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right, we did second. I would put out, this is basically establishing our procurement practices being consistent with signatures. Mr. Baker, Mark, would you like to offer any comment on that?
I think you summed it up pretty well. This is just a matter of, like you said, the statute for the Recorder Record Improvement Fund specifies that it's to be administered. According to county budgeting and procurement practices, so this is just an effort to bring it in line with the directive of the statute.
Okay. Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item N, broadband expansion agreement with Nuvis LLC, Hanover Maron, with a sum of 13,000 dollars. Mr. Goins.
Well, I guess to say the least, this is a long-standing project that our office has been involved with for two and a half years, and we have talked to commissioners about that we need some technical assistance to move this forward a little further. We've had some negotiations with the firms for a while, and I've also had confirmation from our advisory committee on this process, but as you know, in order to make us competitive, we need to have some more technical information that we don't have at this point. I shared this proposal with Solicitor Snook, who feels that we
this proposal with Solicitor Snook, who feels that we have everything lined up. I also was tasked with outreach into some of the other people in the community, and I had collected quite a bit of support money from many of the townships. I have at least either eight or nine municipalities who've signed on to provide some assistance, as well as the hospital, the water authority, MCIDC, the school district. I think I have all of them. So, I have quite a lot of people who've supported this thing. So, that's where we're at right now. We're about to move it forward.
Phil, did you have any municipalities that responded with an absolute no?
Yes.
And were they in areas that need broadband, or were they in areas that are already covered?
They need broadband.
And they still said no?
You understand, and this, just so you know this, I went out and when I asked for this money, I didn't promise anybody has to give them service at their place.
Sure.
What the, the intention to the township, primarily, was ask for two or three hundred dollar donations to just help support the process. And most of the ones, all the ones we, they knew this. The ones that said no was, what's in it for me? So, and I can't promise I can provide service. But we certainly have to, if we don't do this, they're not going to get any better service than they got right now. So, yes, you're right. Not too many, but we did have a little bit of that, too. But most of the people, I mean, I mean, it's pretty substantial. We have her amount right now that has signed on to this thing. And surprisingly, some that I never would have thought we would have gotten our phone right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure there's going to be ample opportunity for participation once these pilot.
One of the things, and I, and I should say that, I shared this with Joe, but you know, one of the things this does is we'll look at developing a pilot, some pilot projects too, and so that we are able to move to a higher level of this project. And I think we want it oriented to have something with an end product that will move us forward. I think that was one of the concerns with before when we talked to people, was we didn't want just a study. We want to have something that would meet, end up with something that would move forward with. And I think, I think the key word in the Nuvis proposal is provide Milton County with a results oriented report that will provide the county with suggested areas of pilot projects and include anticipated costs and schedules. And that's, I think that's a key part of this proposal. And like I said, it's a very reasonable cost for how this works. And like I said, I do have some support from some other in the community. I would appreciate that we entered into a contract with Nuvis.
I concur that I think it's a reasonable cost. But as it relates to pilot projects, if the local municipal government leaders have refused to help fund this, I'm not so sure that we should be looking too seriously at establishing pilot projects in those areas.
Just pointing out that this project is due at the end of May, it's about a six-month.
Right. So, it's a four- or six-month project, and it's so, it's not a long timeframe. So, we, that was another thing we were thinking about. I think, and for those people, my commissioners I've talked about this, is that, is that not only is USD have a new pilot project program they're coming out with right now, but that we believe the state is also going to have a new initiative probably next year. And by doing this, we hope we're in a better position competitively to move something forward. And that's the goal of what I did.
That makes sense.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agreement?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Item N, or excuse me, O, encumber $20,000 local fuels money for the South, South Dorca, Dorca Street Bridge Project. Excuse me. Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item P, encumber $30,000 local fuels money for the Whiskey Road Bridge Project. Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. That concludes our business agenda for today. I'd like to thank Stephen Gibson and Max O'Word from MCETV for being here to film. Thank the viewers for watching. Thanks for all the public that attended today. Thank you, and stay in the church.